Be live.
Hello.
All right, it is six o'clock. We will call the Monday, July 14th regular board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
All right, Nellie Shire.
Here.
Doug Kuchko. Lori Zarbar.
Here.
Don Kuski.
Here.
Andrew Coop.
Here.
Bill Henkel.
Here.
Kevin Jensen.
Here.
Miriam Barbara.
I'm sorry.
And Bert Richard.
Here.
And was a proper notice given for this meeting?
Yes, please be advised that public notice of this meeting as required by sections 19.84 and 65.90 the Wisconsin statutes has been properly given. Such notice consisted of a notice and agenda to the official newspaper, the Rice-Lock Corona type, to the O'Clair leader and radio stations WJMC and WAQE indicating the date, time, and place of the meeting. Such notice was given more than 24 hours prior to the meeting.
Thank you. A proper notice was given for this meeting. We'll now stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I didn't see any one sign up for appearances, so we will move on to the approval of our regular session meeting minutes from June 23rd. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the June 23rd meeting minutes.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed. Minutes have been approved. Next, we have our consent agenda where we have our monthly budget and cash reconciliation report, our board bills. We have two employment resignations. Those are a one-year contract that they'll be signing. We'll be approving their recommendation appointment, recommendation as well for this coming year. And we've got nine employment recommendations. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Posed. And the consent agenda has been approved. Next, we have our student academic standards for the 25-26 school year. Marcia. This is an action item.
Hello. This action item is an annual item for you. For statute, the board must consider and approve the state standards for the year. So in your packet, you have links to all the standards that we're asking you to approve tonight. Are there any questions about the process or any of the standards?
Any questions?
I just would comment that career and tech ed sure fits in well with a lot of them.
It does. It does. In fact, the career and what are they labeled as? I call them the CTE standards, but they're officially the career and whatever readiness. I'm trying to find them. That is, they are designed to be embedded, standards for career readiness, designed to be integrated and embedded throughout courses. So.
Do you think we're doing well with that?
I do, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve those standards.
Move that we approve the standards as presented?
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. And the academic standards have been approved for the 25-26 school year. Next, we have our district administrator annual report on board policy 442, student conduct and discipline.
Yes. And so with this, this is with the second reading of this policy earlier this calendar year. It ensures that each, the first meeting in July, you always get a report on this as a board. And so we're going to be talking about that, myself and other building level administrators here in a couple of minutes. And then just to follow up too, at our next regularly scheduled board meeting, which won't be until August 11th, but just a couple of other pieces we'll be reporting on. I know Mrs. Barbara had asked last meeting about AP exams or recently at some point. So Mr. Polke will be talking about that. And we've got some, some good news to share there. And then also, one of the areas of focus for our district has been attendance the last several many years. And so with that, I'll be sharing our attendance data as well for the 24-25 school year. So, but tonight, we're going to focus on, on behavior and code of conduct and discipline at this point. So just, they've got, and in your packet, there were links to presentations for elementary, middle school, and high school. And so I'm just going to share a couple of overview pieces or one overview piece. And then Natalie and Natalie and Nate are here to talk about elementary, and then we'll work our way up to high school. Then actually, I'm going to show you, Mr. Polke, you don't know this, but he shared a letter with me today that he's going to be sharing with high school parents this year as we, you know, start to kick off the year. And there's actually the parts where you talk about sustained attention and success skills. I'm going to, at some point, we'll pull that up and pull your letter up as well. But with this, and each level is going to talk about this, but this is just kind of an overall summary. With that, at the elementary level, when we looked at majors, and I don't, I've never had the sense like, you know, and they've all got total number of majors, minors, discipline referrals, things like that. I've never had the, we've never had the sense as an admin team, and nor have I felt like it from you as a board, that our, you know, our goal was to significantly reduce, you know, X, well, depending on the behaviors maybe, but you know, that there was a goal in mind in terms of discipline referrals. I think the focus has been more on, you know, how do we accurately, accurately report what's going on and how are we dealing with it and working from there. But you can see in terms of at the elementary level, when we look at major behaviors, the two major ones are physical aggression and failure to follow instructions. And Nate and Natalie will be talking about that. And then we talk about more minor behaviors, failure to follow instructions at a, at a more minor level, and failure to complete work. When we look at majors at the middle school level, so this column here, looking at, you know, failure to follow instructions, and then two very close to each other, inappropriate language or tone and physical aggression. And then when we looked at minors, whoops, sorry, my computer's jumping around, distracting other students and arguing with adults. And then they also had 15 incidences of phone confiscation. The high school, when they come up and talk about that, they're, sorry, this thing is being super sensitive right now. Let me do this. Stop. Failure to follow instructions and inappropriate language. And then on the minors, and you've heard Kurt Mark talk about this, cell phone use and sleeping in class. And so with that, I'm just going to click it to, and the links to these are in your packet. I'm going to click this to Nate and Natalie and get them the clicker.
So, you know, as we go into this, Randy talked a little bit about majors and minors. And so that's really kind of looking at like the severity of an incident. Just wanted to give a little background on that. And that's, as Randy had talked a little bit too, our goal is always trying to get staff to report things accurately. Because what I think is a major, you might not think is a major. What I think is a minor, you might not even report. And so trying to build that consistency amongst our staff and how they're reporting behavior incidents, it's really a goal of all of us as administrators. And I think even our staff realize, like, that's a big task, you know, when you've got, you know, even at Hoggan, when I've got, you know, not as many staff members, I still have staff meetings where we will pull up behavior incidents and we'll talk about it, like, how would you, number one, how would you handle if this is what's going on? Number two, how would you categorize this? Would it be a major? Would it be a minor? Or would you not even document it? So those things are always ongoing, I think, at every single level. So at the elementary level, and this is all three buildings combined, a little over 1,900 majors, 3,300 minors, for a total of 5237. At the very bottom, we put the behavior incident reports. So that's just our 4K students, instead of categorizing it as a major or a minor. What the 4K has done is they call it just a behavior incident report. And so anything that is maybe out of the ordinary for a 4K student, our 4K teachers will just document it in Educlima as an incident. And so you can see they've had 851 total throughout the course of the school year in 4K.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure, can.
Are these, these are not just single instances. This could be the same child 800 times, right? I mean, so it's, every time an incident happens, it could be, you're seeing the same behaviors. So, okay.
Yep. Yep. And we'll kind of get into that a little bit too.
Okay.
Then one more question for me on the previous.
Yeah.
Are we consistent then with 2022, 23, like the way we're reporting or measuring those? Or is the jump?
You know, ideally, but you know, you have a turnover in staff, you're doing some new training, sometimes staff that maybe had a lot of incidents, one year, they have kind of an aha moment of, oh, maybe I could do things a little bit differently. And now all of a sudden, that staff member has fewer, they're reporting fewer, you know, and sometimes just the way that we describe how we want you to report, maybe clicks with somebody a little bit different than what it did the year before. So ideally, yes, it would be consistent from year to year. And again, that's what we're always working towards. Is it?
And I would say, and there's a slide coming up here, a few slides on the presentation, that sometimes it's student dependent as well. So.
Yeah.
Point that out again when he gets to that point.
Sometimes students might get a grade level where you're like, oh my goodness, what are we doing with this crew? So.
So there was, there was a big jump there. What do you attribute that to? Or are you going to get to that?
You know, I know for me, you know, out there, our kindergarten crew, I would say probably was three quarters of the referral. Just those students, for whatever reason, it's a really tough class. And I think, even when you look at Tainter and you look at Hilltop kindergarten, has probably the highest number of referrals. You know, part of that is they're still learning school. But it's also you've got these COVID kids essentially too, where I think it's taking longer to acclimate them to school. I know at Tainter, they've got a lot of students this past year, like they weren't even potty trained coming into school. And so we're trying to get students ready for school.
The 22, or the 23, 24 behavior incident reports for 4K, 3,000, how many at 4K are there? There can't be. A lot of incidents.
That's a lot of potty breaks.
Right.
Isn't, isn't there a requirement that kids have to be potty trained before they get into kindergarten?
Not necessarily.
Kind of push it, but not necessarily.
That, that year.
Yeah, even at the middle school, we have some students that are still struggling.
So that year, there were at least, at least a dozen students that were coming to school in pull-ups. And so that's, and that becomes frankly, an issue for us. And I, you know, I think most of them are at one school and just working with that principal saying, from our standpoint, you tell parents to come in and change those pull-ups at 10:00 AM and 1:00 PM or whatever it is. Yes, we do that for students who have, who have demonstrated special needs. But the other piece of that, I mean, frankly, there's a safety component to that too. You know, we're changing kids' undergarments.
I don't want to hit the weeds, but for the record, I mean, would that be a minor then, if I have to change a pull-up as a teacher? We probably wouldn't even document that.
No.
You know, because that's, that's, to me, that isn't a behavior necessarily. It could be.
Right.
I think for a lot of students, like, they just haven't learned how to go to the bathroom yet in those situations. So to document it as a, you know, and we do have some things in Educlima at times where we will have a documentation only. And so we might document it in some way.
Right.
But we wouldn't put it in as a major.
Okay.
So then this breaks it down by the grade level a little bit this past year. So that 4K, as Nellie was kind of talking about, you know, kindergarten, they again, by far. And what we would like to see is by the time they're in fourth grade, that's a grade level that's earning the fewest number of referrals. And you know, that's what the chart shows. Now, is that going to be the same every year? No. You might have a grade level that's larger in numbers. So then, you know, by default, they might have more referrals when they get into fourth grade. But ideally, you know, at that younger age, we're again, just trying to teach kids how to do school. And so there are going to be behaviors as they're just trying to figure out what does school mean and how do I follow these different expectations than what I have at home? And then our types of behaviors, so that failure to follow instructions, I find it interesting that it's the top for both majors and the minors, you know, just trying to get students to comply. That can be a challenge. And then the physical aggression and, was I looking at that right? Yeah, is kind of our, so physical aggression, failure to complete work are kind of a couple of the others there.
So how do you delineate between a minor and a major failure to follow instruction? I mean, is it just like?
So it probably goes to the intensity of it. You know, like if it's a student didn't listen the first few times, but then they started working, I'd say that's more of a minor. Or the student like, hey, you know, can you please complete your work? And they're ripping it up. That probably turns more into a major versus a minor. You know, and again, that's where those conversations with staff come in extremely beneficial because each incident is going to look very, very different, and it's very unique in and of itself.
All right. And this is the slide that Randy was referring to, and it might be just a certain number of students who are just really blowing up those office discipline referrals. So in this chart, we're just showing that these are our top 20 students that earned the highest number of those office discipline referrals. So they accounted for over 2,500 of them, or about 48% of all of our referrals. So the majority of our students are doing quite well. It's just a few select students who are having a little harder time. So this just shows the breakdown for that.
I like how you give it a positive spin, the top earners.
Yes.
With 360 incidents.
And you don't want to be first place in that. And then this is like our district-wide goal is that 80% of our students will earn zero or one for majors. And we met this goal at the elementary because 85% of our students had either zero or one, which that's pretty, pretty phenomenal. So we are pretty proud of that for documentation. And then it just shows you in the yellow, how many students had two or to five, and then how many had six or more. So it shows it's under 8% of our students who are really getting a lot of, of those office discipline referrals.
Do you have any idea of how the breakdown between schools?
We do. We do. We didn't share that information for this, but we do at our individual schools, we do look at that. And then talk about it within our own staff as to where we are and, and how we're doing with our goals.
I think that's part of your monthly meetings.
Right. Right. Yeah. So then we go to our, so if a student has received a certain number of behavior discipline referrals, then that brings them to the next step. And we have tier two meetings. And at those meetings, then we start looking at what does the student need to help him or her? And then items that they might have, they might have a check-in or checkout sheet. So every morning, they check in with the staff person. Throughout the day, their classes are documented as to how they're doing. Then they check out with a staff member at the end of the day, just to build up that relationship and to just help them, give them another role model. They might have an individualized check-in, check-out. So we might target their goals. We do target their goals based on what the behaviors are showing us. But then we might have to really individualize. And then maybe it's just one certain goal that they're really struggling with. And then we, we tailor it just for that student. We also have SAG groups, which are social and academic intervention groups. And these can be run by our school counselors. We can have special education teacher run this, a classroom teacher, a principal, whoever is available and able to run these groups. And they're targeted at, you know, maybe it's lunchroom behavior, or maybe it's following directions. And so it just depends on, on what the skill is. Then we have mentoring. So we would have, we could have mentors of older students, it may be as a mentor of an adult, just to give that person another, somebody else to support them with, with their behavior. And then individual behavior plans for our students. This could be developed if we just really need to get at what is the underlying root of what's happening and develop that plan for the student.
Are the parents or guardians part of all this?
They can be, yes. At the very beginning stages, they might not be, depending on the severity of the behavior. But then when we do have our tier two meetings, sometimes we do invite parents. Because the more you can involve the families, the better it's going to be. Yeah. And they want to know as well. They don't want this to be a surprise. So we really try to keep the communication going between our families. So last slide is just talking about our next steps and then our action steps. So all three of our schools, we have a monthly tier one meeting. So we look at the data, just like we showed you up here. We look at the data, where are the areas of the school that we need to focus on? And then look at our schools as systems. And where's our system breaking down if we have this many or X number of, of behavior incidents? And then we also have monthly tier two meetings. And that's where we're looking at those behavior interventions, that list that I showed you. How are our students doing with their check-in, check-out sheets? Do they need something more? Do we have to layer on another intervention to, to help the students be successful? And then we have, this last year, we attended a Behavior Solutions district-wide, we had people at that. And a part of the Behavior Solutions workshop was looking at Behavior Academies. So we're just starting to implement these, but they have things such as solving problems, identifying emotions, self-regulation, impulse control. We have certain academies and we have lesson plans that go with those. And then we work through those with our students. And those, right now, like our school counselors are working on putting those academies together at the elementary level. But those again, can be implemented by anyone in our building. And that was the last slide. So any questions for elementary?
Well, I remember being a high school teacher with 2,200 high school kids in Superior. And when we had behavior problems, we would blame the middle school. And then a couple friends in middle school of mine said, uh-uh, it's elementary. But I got to tell you, back then, we did not have the intervention. We did have a couple workshops on how to handle behavior. Part of that also, I think back then, was bullying and also special ed. But I'm glad to see this. That's good.
Well, we feel at the elementary, our job is to correct the behaviors before they get to the middle school.
Right.
So we try, we hope we're.
Yeah. Doing a good job.
The differences between the majors and minors at elementary versus middle versus high school. Kids change, the behaviors are different, the things that are challenging at the elementary level are maybe a little different at the middle and at the high school. Our top majors and minors are different than ours.
And I, and I think this would probably come up at all three levels. You know, there are, these are the things you're doing to teach kids appropriate behavior and help them learn the skills. But there are, do we suspend kids at the elementary level, elementary level? Yes, we have in-school suspensions, we have out-of-school suspensions. Kids miss recess or have to stay or lose privileges on, on certain things. And so that's, that's an important part to talk about as well. So.
Thank you.
Josh, the clicker, or Lori, or whoever.
So in an effort to not be as like redundant and repeat some of the things, one of the things I would say is that we also do all of the tier two interventions that the elementary does. The list would be exactly the same. I don't think we have a slide here. For our, our tier two team actually meets every other week. And so we're constantly looking at those students that are what we would call triggering and, you know, based on their, their behavior incidences. And so just know that that's happening there as well. The other thing that, as I was listening to theirs, we would typically define, and we use minors and majors as well, we would typically say that minors are more, their teacher-managed behaviors. It's things like, you know, they didn't bring their pencil again today. They didn't do their homework, some of those kinds of things. To Lori's question, and then as maybe that refusal to do work is a repeated offense, then they would involve us in the office, and then it might go to a major. So just from that standpoint. So as you can see, our, our total referrals are 2233. You know, it's again, depending on the population of students. The other thing is, we, I think this year will be as large as we've been at the middle school in terms of number of students in the 12 years I've been there. So you can maybe expect things to go up just a little bit because of the number of students, you know, and that 13 incidences a day, and this would include both majors and minors.
Josh, I have a question. So 13 a day, do you guys try to split them up?
We do, yeah.
I mean, how much is, so when somebody has a referral.
This is majors and minors too. So, you know, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be involved in all of those minors. You know, that, that may be a teacher just, hey, can you stay after class for five seconds here? Hey, you know, you had your head down today. Like, I'm going to document that, but I need you to be more engaged tomorrow.
You guys aren't burning half a day up, putting fires out.
It depends on the day.
And the size of the fire.
Some of the majors, I mean, some of those things might take us a half a day just to kind of sort through and deal with, right? But the thing I do, do want you to walk out of here with is, you know, for the most part, our kids are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Our kid, our schools are full of great kids. We have some students that are struggling at times. And there's a whole gamut of reasons from, you know, not getting the basic needs, food and all those kinds of things that Lori sees. Two, they just were never really taught how to hear the word no, unfortunately. So, you know, we, we reteach, we have conversations, we get ahold of parents, we do all of, all of those pieces. And there are kids that just continue to struggle with it. And then we, you know, go through other processes, whether that's referrals to special education or other more intense interventions, day treatment, all the, the resources that we have. We involve county in some pre, pre-delinquency meetings. That's something that's been new the last few years that's been effective too. So.
So this is just something that we have, we wanted to show you just because we figured there'd be some questions as to what the difference between majors and minors are. The PBIS team, the past few years, has really worked hard at narrowing things down so that we can really analyze our data, we can see where kids are struggling, and then what can we do to put in place to make sure that they are not struggling, we can help them. So that just kind of gives you an idea. Again, it's not necessarily cut and dry as you might think it would be, because something comes up and staff are like, well, what do I do? What do I label this as? And we have a flip chart that all the staff have with multiple resources on it. So we're like, refer to the flip chart and we kind of work through it. So it's, it's a learning experience for everybody as we go. But that, every staff member has kids see it, so they know the difference between majors and minors. So again, the staff managed are going to be your minors, and then office managed are going to be the majors.
So we, we just tried to break down kind of what, so this is the minor behaviors and kind of what those are. And as you can see, distracting others and arguing with adults happens to be, at least for this year, the, the number two, one and two particular areas in terms of minors, just another look at that here. These are the top five. Moving then into majors, majors would be things that we're going to be involved in directly. We're, at the very least, we're going to be, you know, talking with the staff, we're going to be talking with parents, and there's going to be some sort of a consequence when there is a, a major written. In terms of response, is this me yet, or is that, that's me? So you can see, and again, I forget who asked the question, but you know, a lot of these are, are minors that we're talking about. So it's going to be things that, you know, teachers are going to be pulling these students aside. They may be addressing some of these things in the moment in the classroom. It's, some of it may be, hey, I need to see you at lunchtime today, and those kinds of things. Repeated minors can turn into a major. So if we So if we see something day after day after day, that will then turn into a major behavior.
So just to kind of give you an idea of like what we look at. So PBIS, when we meet every month, we really try to dig down on our data to know like what time of day it is, which is after lunch, what day of the week it is, and then kind of looking at all that information. So this is just to kind of give you an idea of the days of the week that were rough, more rough than others this week, or this year, and then where they happen. And this has never been a surprise to us. And it's not that, like, you know, certain teachers are maybe not handling their classroom as others. Like you say, oh, the avant-gardes. But avant-gardes have so much with them because they are, they're elective. So some kids may not want to be there. There's lots of hands-on projects. I mean, there's a whole wide variety. It's not a, what I would say, always a typical classroom where you're, you know, reading a story, you might answer some questions, have a discussion. So sometimes kids struggle with that.
Related to this, this last year, just as a kind of an example of how we try and evolve, if you will, we actually added in the specific classrooms, just as like, okay, let's maybe dig down into that. Is there something going on in terms of, you know, think about a band room with 100 kids is different than a gym, is different than a language arts classroom. And so just trying to dig into that. So we do have that data, and that's where you see classroom, classroom, classroom.
And we don't look, yes.
That's where they are.
Yep, and we don't like talk to the teachers about it unless the teacher would come to us if we see something. But for instance, language arts, you'll see that. There's always an uptick where they do their writing unit, because it's hard. So there's, there's a little bit more, you know, with students, it's a little bit more rigorous. So you're gonna see a little bit uptick in the behaviors. This is just another picture showing you, month by month, what it is. You'll notice in September, we start out very, very low. That is our month, I know we've talked about this before for PBIS, where we have discrete lessons that we do every single morning with every single student, fifth through eighth grade. So it's really all about teaching them what we expect of them every year. And then really, in October is when we start to flood, and that's where you're gonna see, you may see more write-ups, but you're also gonna see a lot more reteaching happening with the teachers. They're gonna say, hey, let's go over this again. What is, what are the rules, what do we expect of you? And then just by grade level as well. You'll see the numbers, again, it can vary by class, but we just like to kind of keep track of it and see how we're doing with all of that.
So these last couple slides are just kind of looking then at kind of overall. So this is minors. We obviously would love to see that green number at 80%. You know, but we're working on that. I would say, you know, overall, that number of 15% of our students are in that six-plus. You know, those are the students that we spend more time with and continue to kind of put resources into. So this is a look at the minors. Kind of going back to what the elementary said here. Our top 20 students accounted for about 30% of our minors in this case. So then now the look at the majors. So this would be, you know, basically nine out of 10 students are kind of doing exactly what they need to do all year long. And that, those 10%, we continue to work with. So this is the look more at that major side. And in the case of majors, those top 20 students, about half of the majors that we deal with.
So just to kind of tie it all together, these are our next steps. As we talked about, we really would like to have the minors at 80%. The majors, we're happy with where those are at, at the 90%, with most of the students doing what they're wanting to. But just continuing to do professional development with staff. We are doing successful classrooms this year. We also are still continuing to focus on restorative practices and then giving specific feedback. So we have some training like that we're gonna do with that. And again, just keeping in mind trauma-sensitive practices with the calming corners, de-escalation, restorative practices, the successful classrooms. Continuing to work on PBIS and making sure that we are doing what the kids need, looking at the data to figure out where we have weaknesses, how to fix that, how to help that. What do we need to do as staff to help those students? What do we not have in place that we maybe need in place? And then on the right side, that was just kind of specific on what we are doing with that is just continuing to promote all of those things, flood with the tickets, and then have successful students. But then also, we have like, oh my gosh, celebration days when they hit those rewards, so.
What are tickets?
They're just little actual tickets, like you would get at a...
Like you're at an arcade?
Positive.
Then you can use those.
Yep, so then they can, they have, each classroom has one. And then each classroom will have a certain day of the week where they draw, and then they give prizes for those. And then at the end of the month, you could also put it into the big one. And then once we hit a line, then we pull names, and then we hit our all-school celebration.
The idea is that, you know, Don is not doing what he's supposed to be doing in the meeting. We would say, Mr. Schreier, here's a ticket, because you're, you know, you're sitting here and you have good eye contact, you're doing all the things. And then Don goes, boy, now he's getting tickets for doing all this. Maybe I'll start.
I think you should flip that around.
Usually I just have to stay after and talk to by Randy, but I don't know.
Are there any other questions about the data or anything else?
I just want to put, just because Mrs. Leef just talked about the professional development component, professional development component, and that's a part of the policy as well, that staff on an annual basis receive professional development on classroom management and pieces related to that.
I guess my question is like, the stress in the classroom, is this, I mean, this seems stressful for a teacher that has to be in charge of a lot of this. Is this, I mean, are some of these things helping de-escalate that so they can teach? I mean, that's kind of what you're hearing, is these teachers like, I'm just flooded with behaviors versus being able to teach.
Yeah, you know, we didn't bring up, I'm gonna say it's, we're about five years into having the voider room. If you're familiar with that, that's a break space. And so, you know, students that are really struggling, they have that option. Many of the students that we're talking about in that 10% are students with IEPs. And so we do have resource rooms for those students where they, you know, they may need to spend a little bit more of their day if they're unable to do what they need to do. So I feel like there's a lot of resources for staff, but, you know, it is challenging, for sure.
One thing that we do talk about with them is because it has come up, like, these restorative conferences are really all about like, making sure you repair that relationship so there's no harm. Because a student, an adult forgets most of the time. A student comes in the next day and like, you still hate me? Well, there's no hate ever. But it's figuring out to the teachers how you can make that happen in class. Because, you know, us talking to the student isn't necessarily gonna fix the relationship with the teacher, which is really what we need them to do. So we give them ideas on how to do that, because it doesn't have to happen right when that, you know, incident happens. It can happen 10 minutes later, it can happen at the end of class. So just giving staff in that sense, like, here's how you implement this, not just telling them to go do it.
And the big challenge is...
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I would think that restorative practices in PBIS work best on the kids that are the less frequent offenders and that are open to improving behavior eventually. Is there any escalation beyond that? I would think eventually there have to be some potentially unpleasant consequences.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Are there?
Yeah.
Is that included?
Yeah.
You know, more suspensions than we probably like.
Yeah.
And, you know, detentions and some of those kind of things. There is a few students that ended up off-campus. But at the end of the day, all kids need to learn, and we need to create an environment that is conducive to them.
I would say the frequent fires though, Phil, to your point, they really understand it, and they have gotten like actually good at, like, understanding what it is and like, okay, we have to talk. Yes, I know we have to talk. Here's what, like, so they, you know, by the end of the year or two years, sometimes it takes four years, but they actually understand it, they just have never been taught it. So to just be like, you're in trouble, get out, that's not gonna fix it. So they actually are very receptive to it.
Right, good. And in our, in our rework discipline policy, we had suggested maybe some exercise alternatives too that could be positive, could be beneficial to the student, could be positive, and maybe you can't make them do it, but offer to them. Has that been under any consideration? Have you noticed that in the policy at all?
So some...
We've noticed it.
Yeah, some students like to work to, you know, get that out, but some students it actually escalates them.
Sure. In the voider room.
From a restorative standpoint, you know, student messes up the bathroom, they're after school, fixing that, cleaning. They're throwing food in the lunchroom, they're in the lunchroom cleaning the next day. So from some of those kind of standpoints, it's maybe not exactly what you're getting at with like exercise, but it's fixing the problem with consequence to crime, if you will.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kurt and I are going to go through the high school. Lots of different similarities, but yet a lot of differences when we talk about the high school level. And it'll kind of come to light here in some of our graphics that we have for you. I'd say a couple things. We run the Behavior Task Force at the high school, and we really do a couple things with that. One is you heard the professional development part. So as I've kind of grown as administrator and gotten, been doing this for a few years, I wanted to enhance our overall behavior system at the high school. So I'm not gonna take credit for all that, because like I said, I have that group of dedicated staff, the Behavior Task Force, that's really helped me. I kind of did some impromptu surveying of some of our newer staff as they come to us out of these college programs. They receive very little training on discipline. In fact, I can't speak for the other levels, but when we're up here talking majors and minors a lot, I don't know if that ever necessarily gets taught at those college programs, and then also how to deal with difficult children or behavior. So I just want to let you know as a board that we do a lot of that in-house. We find ourselves doing that in-house. So there's a learning curve for our adults as well as our students, because we're constantly doing that. So again, the Behavior Task Force that we have, we do stuff on our in-services all the time to really work through the behavior part, because it is important. I mean, you have policies on it, we talk about it a lot. So those are some of the kind of behind-the-scenes things or future things that we're doing, because our teachers, and I can't speak for years ago or whatever, but they don't receive a lot of training. They probably get it during their cooperating teaching time, and that probably depends on the strengths and weaknesses of their supervising teacher, what they pick up in terms of behavior management. So I work with staff, as well as all the other administrators, a lot on working with how we go about behavior, whether it's a restorative piece, whether it's a punitive piece. That's kind of an ongoing thing all the time, as well as the majors and minors type piece here. So I'll get into some of the data, and I'll preface some of this. So you'll see our total referrals are at 977. Now, open and honest with you. I wanted to make sure I can differentiate between what some of the classroom behaviors are and attendance. At the high school level, you know, that number looks a lot smaller than other levels. That's because I've pulled out unexcused absences and truancy data. That would put us in the same kind of numbers as the other buildings, because in my opinion, at the high school level, there's two different parts. What's happening in our classrooms and hallways and cafeteria, and then our attendance. So we have unexcused attendance, and we have truancy probably at a higher weight, excuse me, tardies at a higher rate than the other buildings. But I'm focusing this piece of the puzzle on what's happening inside the walls of the building during the day. Okay, and then as Randy mentioned, our attendance data is getting better, but those are constant things we're doing behind the scenes for attendance and truancy and tardies. We are running some of the academies. Mrs. Cross runs an attendance group with those kids that are habituals. And then plus, at the high school level, we see a lot of the, getting the court systems involved. I sit on a lot of CCS teams for some of our students that struggle with different pieces of behavior that might be attendance-related. So I just want to make sure I kind of clarify.
Just for clarification, CCS is a county program. And so you're talking social workers and things like that.
Yep, exactly. And that's when some of our students are, I'd say, having more struggles. They usually get surrounded by a team of individuals, it's not just the school district and things like that. So that's some of our referral data. We're at about six per day. Things are dropping. Since we went to EdgeClimber, we'll be in our third or fourth year of EdgeClimber. To me, it's a lot cleaner to pull data out of than Skyward. So for a few years there, when I first took over, elementary and middle school level was using EdgeClimber. We were still putting everything into Skyward. Not as nice to pull out. I still put some of our majors into Skyward, because that links directly to if I have a suspension. So for example, if we get a student that's caught with a vape, I'm gonna put that into EdgeClimber and into Skyward, because then I can put my suspension data right in that the state wants. But it is, it is included here. But EdgeClimber, I'm still growing at it. I gotta thank Mrs. Christopherson for putting together this slideshow. She's really efficient at pulling that data. But I have told our staff at the high school, please document behaviors. So I tell them straight up, I don't care how many incidents we have in. I want to see the data so that we can drive decision-making in our building. So that number that up there of 977, it could be higher, it could be lower. But I tell the teachers, I want things documented, because I can pull this data out with EdgeClimber that you'll see here in a few minutes, and we can start driving what we want to do for goals in our building. So if I don't know about or I don't hear about it, then I don't know where the problems might lie or the room for improvement might lie. So that's a little bit about those numbers. So I apologize, there's no good way, as I just bragged up EdgeClimber, there isn't a great way to print where it shows you the full behavior code at the bottom. But what you'll see from the bar chart and what we have as a note on the bottom, our two highest referrals last year were cell phone use and sleeping in class. So I'll let Kurt talk about in a few minutes the things he's already starting with. His letter out to her parents, our back-to-school letter to address a couple of things, and what we're kind of looking at for help from them as well. And then kind of just, you've heard this terminology already from some of the other schools, inappropriate language, arguing with adults, failure to do work. Those are all there too for us. And then I just want to point out that the elementary and the middle school are doing a great job, because if you look up there, yep, when kids first come to us as freshmen and sophomores, that's when we see the most referrals, they're still immature yet, they haven't quite figured it out. And then you'll notice as you move down the line, we've got 12th in front of 11th, because actually, our 11th grade last year was our least amount of referrals by just a handful there. But the kids get better and better. And that's, one thing's nice about my job is students, when they get to the high school, and especially to the latter part of high school, they have learned to regulate much better. Whereas the folks at the elementary, middle school level, they're dealing with more of the, I'd say, meltdowns and tantrums, if you will. By the time I get to high school, I'm probably dealing a lot with like unexcused absences, because a kid can get in their car and go, than some of those other type things that we see. So while we're all similar, we are different in what we see. But our freshmen are what we want to focus on. So I'm working on some things we can do in our home rooms and things like that. We've already done a lot of things with getting our freshmen involved in different clubs and things, because that comes down to accountability. So when we talk about consequences, you can't be on the warrior leadership team if you're leading the league in cell phone abuse, or you can't be on the baseball field if you're leading the school and arguing with adults. So, you know, we talk a lot about what's it mean to be a warrior? What's it mean to put on a uniform? What's it mean to be in the play, in the band, choir? Those are those kind of things that can get removed for periods of time that, when we get into extreme cases and things like that. But otherwise, just like the other buildings, we have lots of parent meetings. Student Achievement Team, we meet every Tuesday. We pull this data up, we look at it, okay, who's struggling in the classroom, things like that. I work with a lot of the special needs populations, I see a lot of IEPs. There's behavior plans and whatnot written into those IEPs where we're seeing things. And again, I ask our IEP case managers to document behaviors, because a lot of times we can go to families, say, hey, this is what we're seeing. And they can be, yep, guess what, we just had a medication change, or something changed in the family dynamics that might have spurred this behavior. You've probably heard it over and over, behavior is communication. So when we start to see a trend line, then we know something's going on, whether it's a medication change, a home life change, a student struggling with a relationship, whatever it might be. So the data is very important. Some of it can be very subjective, the data, but other times it can be very important with us knowing how we should handle a student moving forward. Our systems level, this is majors and minors together. And you'll see, it's probably a lot like what the other groups showed with the, with the green, yellow, red. 49 students accomplished are at our six-plus. And again, that can be a good or a bad thing, but like I just told you, I want my staff to document things. So maybe sometimes we might consider it over-documentation, but it helps us with trend lines. So when those 49 students have six or more, that could be looked at as a negative, but at the same time, it's helping us learn about what we can do to help that student. If we don't have that information, then we don't know what might be the real problem behind the scenes. Because there is... because there is there is a there is a reason why the behavior is not not where we want to be. This is just an AI statement that Edge Climber helps us with, shows us that the cell phone um is is a problem. And it says that October and Wednesdays and in the afternoon where when it when it all happened the most, and it gives us the next step to focus on the freshman, like I mentioned. Uh, universal strategies that target cell phone use and sleeping class. Mr. Bohokey will talk about that um a little bit next here, but those are right now two of our our big ones that we're looking at. So um, Mr. Bohokey, do you want to talk about your letter a little bit? And I can also answer any questions that come up.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Bice. I think as you hear some similar language being used, I want to give credit to Mr. Bice and the Behavior Task Force. As the break we had several years ago and the kind of close and the hybrid learning transition back, that's where we saw a need at the high school to move to the major minor conversation and documentation. I would say it's ten, eight years ago at the high school, we were using Skyward. Everything was a major. It was going in Skyward from a teacher's perspective if there was a punitive consequence. Detention, suspension, or something greater. That's how staff at the high school were using Skyward. When we saw the increase of behaviors coming into our building and it was just overwhelming, it got to the point where Mark's like, this, this isn't, our system needs to be upgraded to, how are we working? Because we had more names being surfaced, more the staff burnout was like, all these things that were just thought were norm, like run a tight ship. We have a few incidences. We work for it. We just saw those spilling over. So doing the minors and the majors and getting consistent on the language, help from the middle school, obviously with that same common language. So when a freshman comes in the building trying to speak the same language that the eighth grader remembers, so it reteaches, so we go from there. So you will see some similarities, and I want to thank Mark and the team because without that, we wouldn't have the documentation, say, there's ten incidents for Johnny during term one in first hour. Well, there's a similarity to first hour. Maybe he needs a break halfway through, or maybe he does need to check in. Maybe he does need a walk before he reengages. It could be the bus. It could be something that's getting him triggered before he hits. Those things we do at the high school, just like the other levels, trying to problem solve why. And you cannot do that without documentation. When I was a teacher, all of us contest to it as in the role of a classroom. You put it down and it's like, get to the end of the day, you just say, I'm going to write that student up for documentation. You get to the end of the day, you're overwhelmed, you get your stuff. Ah, leave it off. I won't do it. Get to day two, you're like, ah, same thing happened, and you might do the same thing. By the end of the week, you might have two or three instances you wish you would have documented because now you come down and talk to one of us and they're like, oh, this has been happening, but parents don't know. We don't know. We can't problem solve it if it's been an issue. So that's why we want the data so we can, hey, this is happening. There's a pattern here. You've had twelve incidences. It's pretty minor, but we can use that to problem solve. If it's just all of a sudden I'm fed up and kick them out and send them to the office, and there's been twenty little things that built it to this overfill, it might have been minor that day, but the staff had it up to here and they sent them out. Well, there's a reason why they got up to here because there's a lot of things we could have maybe stepped in now. So those things happen on a daily basis. Um, so improvements, consistency, language. Um, you know, like Mark said, there's a lot of pieces to it. I don't have anything really to add for clarity. Obviously, they're seniors. Um, we had a lot of seniors graduate earlier leave, so our senior data, um, they do figure it out. But there's less seniors sometimes in the building, um, and they might choose to leave at different times. And that's why our attendance data, every period they could take off, obviously, and step out of the building. So that's why we we struggle with some of those incidents as well. Um, so in in general, um, what next? I guess Randy, you mentioned a little bit. He's he's got a letter up here. As we look at improvement, um, you know, I sat down, I reflect all summer, like all of us, and trying to figure out where we're going to go. Um, the new board agenda, uh, board vision and mission, um, spot on. You know, I think the the life ready, uh, career ready, college ready, I mentioned that in my letter. We need to focus on what skills do kids need to be successful. Uh, I'm mentioning that in my front of my letter as we we grow. This is a partnership. Our employers want employees that are respectful and can and can show up on time and be prompt and prepared. Um, as parents, they want to know that if it's not working because we we all have an invested interest to make sure that we are um suc- successful in that. This partnership is big. Um, in particular, I'm going to reference the two top concerns. Parents are going to hear from my letter to them. Hey, the two top concerns is fatigue. Kids are fatigued. They're coming to school not ready to learn. Mental preparation and academic readiness is, we could talk to students that's staying up too late. Their technology detox is not happening before bed. Their social media drive at night is keeping going, and they're not getting quality sleep. Entering the building, see a cloud of kids fatigued, their heads down, kind of processing that uh first hour is typically when you see most of that, uh, because it's, they're just not getting adequate sleep. So one of those things, I'll be mentioning that. I have some tips for parents to kind of think about as we work forward with that. And then obviously, our cell phone use at the high school. Um, it was one of our major referrals again. Um, it's banned during classroom time, should not be out. Um, we were trying to disengage. That's another sign of disengagement from our classroom instruction that we have to address. Uh, we have to share it with parents, let them know we're here to help. We know employers don't want to see that on their workplace either, so it's it's um banging the the same drum that we're all working on together. I think the the biggest thing is building that culture that we want. And um, when we look at our success skills, I really push for um the change for uh in all of them. But preparation and productivity are the two that I feel are the the core skills that we're going to talk about and teach and talk about with parents and and work as a partnership. So um, there's more language in that letter, but I just highlight that. I know Mr. Dross, you had some things maybe you saw or.
Yeah, no, I just Kurt had just shared this with me as an FYI this afternoon. And knowing we were going to be talking about what we're going to be talking about, and you know, we've talked about this at policy and at the full board level, and um, just thought, you know, I'm going to share this and uh please then to the to the discussion tonight and in the discussion tonight and the conversations we've been having throughout the district.
Yeah, the three bulleted items is, you know, establish a consistent reasonable bedtime, age appropriate for each level. It's different for each grade. Um, second one is that tech free research is showing tech free time thirty to sixty minutes before bed, trying to do that tech detox, they're calling it, it's buzzwords, but shutting off your blue light screens, doing that. All of us, including me, have my phone too close to the bed, so I use it as an alarm clock. I use it. It buzzes, it rings. We're kind of emergency responders, so that's just a bad habit of ours. But it's there and I can reach it and I can look and see if I need to respond. Kids doing that, it's social media and it's it's like a gift when they get that buzz. They got to look and it it grinds all night. And I'm saying all night. It doesn't shut off. One kid will not have a good night. They'll be sending stuff to everyone in their group. It's going to be an issue that we have to solve. We need parents to help us with that. And that's, you know, having the phone silent and not near their bed, outside their room. So if the flashes, and I have the same, I'll put it away from my bed, but it'll be dark and all of a sudden it flashes, the light comes on. I know there's a message and I'm like, I better check it. It could be a response that I have to go after, right? We all do it. Um, but and then uh charged phones and devices outside the classroom bedroom would be my suggestion. And um Walmart might be get some or Amazon might get some alarm clocks maybe purchased this next uh couple of weeks when I send it out. But that would be um going back to our traditional alarm clock is probably the safest and supported for what we need to do. Any questions?
Well, I I would think that uh instances of bullying and other inappropriate behavior on social media, they wouldn't really even be detected be detected necessarily because, you know, how would you know about that? How would you write it up? And is that is that much of a problem too?
You know, Mondays are typically the most frequent when we get spill over from the weekends. So things happen off campus between between peers, between related real uh relation. Uh, off campus, our SROs do a lot, nice job with trying to address that because if it's not, but it does usually spill over into the classrooms. If a conflict between two peers is going to happen, it we we do get involved with a lot of those. So as much as we say, oh, it didn't happen here, it happened at home. You would say Mondays and uh over vacations, weird, nothing happened at Christmas, it's been pretty quiet. Well, guess what? We deal with sibling conflicts on on those days that we come back because they weren't getting along and they hold them all in till one of us can usually tackle them. But uh, but to to your point, uh, Mr. Henkel, it's there and obviously we deal with it. Obviously, some of it is discretion of when to get involved, when not to. Um, some of it definitely involves police intervention for that conversation. If it's harassment language or crosses the line, our SROs are directly involved with that behavior because many of them are reported, documented, conversations are had with the individuals to block or stop, or it's been documented. We usually meet with both parties and say, this is documented. The line's been drawn. If it happens again, it turns into harassment behavior. And uh, that usually, most of the time, we'll stop it, especially if Officer John Drew and administration is involved in saying, this is known, this is documented, and if we need to, we go to the next level, which would be school restraining orders, harassment harassment conversations and bullying documentation.
To answer that, Mr. Bice, Mr. Bohokey, Mr. Tomish, Mrs. Leaf, uh, what percentage of Monday mornings do you deal with overflow exactly like you're talking about uh during the school year?
We better have two to three hours for that Monday morning.
I was going to say, I know it's pretty much every Monday morning. And you're being a little bit politically correct, uh, but yeah, I know pretty much every Monday morning, they're spending a significant amount of time on overflow from the weekend of harassing, bullying behaviors, um, all of that stuff.
SROs are great because they'll like, hey, here's what happened over the weekend. You know, um, we handled it or now we may need to be, but it's actually part of that Monday morning thing. It's all I'll seek out, Officer Randy, I'm like, okay, but you know, looking at your logs, what we got, you know, is anything? And it's it's always a nice when we get, oh, I don't, there's not much in here, nothing in here. And I'll go back to the behavior part, get away from the bullying a little bit too. But again, I will also check in as do the other administrators with Officer Randy or Stephanie about, was there an incident at home? Is there an apparent incarcerated? That's going to drive up our behavior. So Monday mornings between what we're talking about there, maybe the the students not getting along, but also checking in with what happened where our students might be coming to the building and there's something hanging over their head. That's a pretty big time, so.
Any questions or?
Any other questions?
Well, I I compliment you in sending out that letter. I'd put some of those things in bold.
Yeah, it'll be in bold. It'll be obviously some of those things and I'll send it. Randy can send.
It's going to be a concerted effort from really all the level. I know elementary, it's it's not much of an issue um, but all the levels and from the district as well.
I think it's referencing and when I saw the revised uh vision, vision statement, it fits perfect to our 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 goals at the high school, being life ready, career or college. Obviously, military as well. We've had an increase of kids in military, which goes with that life ready piece. It doesn't have to be stated. I think the tagline fits it, um, because that's the research supported. But um, that's, we all want that with shared, and that's a strong partnership with all of us. So I think parents will see that that they want that for their child and at the high school. Like I said, uh, we have great, great kids and we have great parents and they want the best for their kids. And uh, we want the best for their kids and our community as well. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have our finance committee meeting update. Don.
That's me. Um, the finance committee met Thursday, July tenth. Uh, all members were present, uh, as were Randy and Victor. Um, gave notice, approved the minutes. Uh, first thing we did on the agenda was to approve the outreach plan with WGMC and WKFX. Um, we did mention or task Randy with trying to talk or we talked about concentrating our ads a little bit more, maybe especially around uh open enrollment times. Um, but all that outreach plan is basically our ad buy from the radio stations. Um, we then talked a little bit about long-term budget. Um, in particular, our two thousand five, twenty-five, twenty-six budget, which uh, you know, maybe is changing a little bit. Uh, as everyone knows, the state uh came up with the uh budget adoption um between the governor and the assembly and senate. And so that affected us um in a good, positive way, we think. Um, we could pick up um some increased special ed funding. Uh, we're not quite positive how much because of the funding formula. We're not sure how it's going to work, but it looks like we could go from potentially being in the red uh for twenty-five, twenty-six to being in the black, which was the really good news. Um, it wouldn't completely pick up the deficit that we had this year, but it certainly is better than continuing continuing to operate in the red. So that was hopefully good news. Um, we then kind of discussed some um potential long-term cost reductions for the future because although next year looks good, the year after and the year after don't because of declining enrollment. So we're still projecting deficits in those years. So uh, we uh started talking about some potential cost reductions, but we thought um it would be good to discuss those as a full board and not just a committee at the committee level. And maybe possibly something we could start talking about at our retreat. Um, so then we went on to health plan networks. Um, we reviewed a possible um change in healthcare networks. Uh, what that would mean would possibly be a pretty large cost savings. And it would also provide insurers or staff uh with more variety in uh provider choice. So uh, stay tuned. Um, we're kind of looking into it. We don't want to get into, it seemed too good to be true. Was it too good to be true? So we, instead of just jumping in, we tasked Victor with kind of doing some more background work on it before we uh decided to do it. Uh, we reviewed the bills, set our next meeting. Uh, obviously, summer, we were struggling, so our next meeting is Monday, uh, August eleventh at four forty-five. Usually, we meet on Thursdays, but had a lot of vacations and whatnot going on. So that was it.
Any questions? All right. Thank you for that update. Next, we have the uh policy and legislative advocacy committee meeting update. And we met on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth at five PM. All board members were present, and we spent a lot of time that night on policy for artificial intelligence, for the AI part of things. Um, we, during that discussion, we kind of focused on some things, asked Randy to dig a little deeper on those areas and put some things together for us to bring back for our next policy meeting. Um, we talked some more about cell phones specifically at the high school and what that might look like if we uh change that and tighten up the uh policy a little bit more yet since that, as we saw earlier, is one of our major uh issues that they see at the high school. And then um, we talked about the, a minor grammatical change on the uh mission and vision statements, and we approved that. But because it's just grammatical, it does not have to come for a full approval because it really didn't change the meaning. Just cleaned it up a little bit. And uh, we then uh tabled the rest of our policies and went home that night. And our next meeting is next Tuesday, whatever next Tuesday is.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, I believe. So any questions on policy and legislative advocacy? All right, then seeing none, we'll move into the WSB public policy correspondent update. Phil, what do you got for us?
Yeah, a lot happened. Um, I think on uh Monday morning, I looked at my email and I thought, wow, a lot of stuff happened. Uh, we went from looking like there wasn't going to be a new budget this year, which would have meant that uh the last biennial budget would have been carried over to having a new budget that happened over the weekend that was bipartisan, that the governor signed in his night gown at about one AM within an hour after it passed. And the budget was approved on the second of July, and uh I guess there was time pressure because uh in order to get some federal money to support our hospitals, they had to have a signed budget first. So um, apparently, trust in some form was restored there very rapidly. Uh, some things of interest that the budget included, um, as Don mentioned in his excellent and very interesting report, by the way.
Thank you.
Um, general sped aid, special education aid, which currently uh was supposed to be at thirty-three percent, was close to thirty percent, uh, is supposed to be increased to forty-two percent funded by the state by twenty-twenty-six and forty percent, forty-five percent by twenty-twenty-seven. But that's some certain, um, which means that the actual amount may end up being a little bit less than it would be if it were some sufficient, which means that whatever the schools say it costs at forty-five percent would have to be funded by the state. Well, that's not the way it is. They're going to give us a certain amount of money, which is estimated to be forty-two percent funding at the end of this year. High cost uh funding was increased fifty percent at the end of twenty-twenty- High cost funding was increased 50% at the end of 2026 and it's supposed to be funded at 90% by the end of 2027. So hopefully those things will both help our budget, as Don again mentioned. UW got more than a billion dollars for various things. 330 million was put into childcare. There was some increase in sparsity aid and general and high cost transportation aid. They had been, the JFC, Joint Finance Committee and the DPI, Department of Public Instruction, had been fighting in the courts about who would get to control the money that had been allocated by the Joint Finance Committee for the early literacy program. And that was resolved, I think in favor of the Joint Finance Committee. So in this budget, part of the process was that about $40 million was released to get, to support the early literacy program. There's about a $30 million increase in mental health grants. Vouchers for private schools were also increased somewhat to a maximum of 13,800. Office of School Safety was actually funded more than the governor had requested. About 1.3 million was cut from the DPI with a potential clawback if they request it and if JFC improves it of about 1 million. Department of Workforce Development, I noticed that was in Bert's notes from the seminar he went to this last week of an increase of $6 million to support various things. Full-time equivalency for 4K was slightly increased. If 437 hours of instruction is provided from 0.5 to 0.6 equivalents, which will help very marginally with our aid formula. General equalization aid was left at the $325 per pupil in the, would it be the 399 through 300? Or in the second year of the 400 years of the $325. And future, future things of interest that, that have been brought up in prior budgets that WASB representatives mentioned. Equalization aids payment timing, that was brought up and that could be helpful to us so that the equalization aid would be referred from the state in four equal amounts rather than, I, I think we get most of it the end of the year, don't we? Which isn't necessarily good, so that could be good. Referendum restrictions on referenda, especially with regard to adding information about what the anticipated actual cost of the referendum with regard to interest rates, et cetera, might be, that could come up again. There was a bill enabling districts to rehire annuitants after they retire, which could help with some staff shortages. Some debate is developed, some debate is developing over whether to decouple vouchers from the property tax, pros and cons of that, and a few other things. There was, interestingly enough, after the budget was passed, they passed a technical amendment to it, which fairly, to my reading anyway, reduced the open enrollment payment that goes to the enrolling district from what it was, which was something like $1,500 to $500 per pupil in both 26 and 27. So not sure I understand that totally, but that was kind of a summary of everything that happened. It was a lot. For those of you that are angry at me for being that long, I, I hope you appreciate that. It's just a summary. So.
All right. Any questions?
That was outstanding, Phil.
Thank you very much, Don, as was yours.
Thank you.
All right. With that, the WSB resolution adopt, resolutions that were adopted by the delegate assembly in 2025, last, this last January down in Milwaukee. Does anybody have any questions on any of those you saw, any concerns, thoughts? Is there anything that as a board that we would want our policy committee to look at, to submit? If there is, let me know and we will have some further discussion at the committee level on that. All right. We'll move on. Our upcoming meeting schedule, there's a couple webinars on the list, as well as the new teacher welcome luncheon. If you can make that on Thursday, August 14th, that starts at 11:45. That's, will be held at Lehman's. And if you can attend that, please let Katie Wick know here at the admin office. And she'll get you signed up for that, as many of us that can attend. It's just a nice way to welcome our new staff. So if you can make it fit into your schedule, please try. And then the back to school, the all-staff-in-service is on Monday, August 18th. It starts at 7:30 with a continental breakfast and then the program gets going at eight o'clock. The board helps hand out the 5, 10, 15, 20, 25.
And higher.
And 30. There were some 30s. I signed those tonight. So number of 30s as well. So we hand out those recognitions, shake hands, congratulate our staff for the time that they've been here. So if you can attend that, that happens fairly early in the program. So then you can get on with your workday. But if you can attend that, let Colleen know on that one. And that is the upcoming meeting schedule. And with that, I would entertain a motion to convene into closed session.
District events quick. Just a couple of things.
I'm gonna skip you.
That's fine too.
All right. We'll, we'll, we'll go back and hear what Randy's got to say.
Just a couple of things here. If you look at our, check out our Facebook page. Not a district sponsored event per se, but a lot of people in the district are a part of it. But Kids from Wisconsin is coming up on Thursday, July 24th. And not one this year, but two Rice Lake Area School District students in that. Logan Stager, who is pictured there and Nolan Tomisch. This is Nolan's second or third year in Kids from Wisconsin. And so as well as the Steel Warriors will be opening for the night. It's in Veterans Park with Rain, Rain site to be the Rice Lake High School auditorium. Barron County Fair is this week. And with that, if you go to the fair, you'll see not only a lot of kids from Rice Lake, but kids from all around the county. And I would encourage you, it's an educational event in and of itself. Any kids you run into, ask them about their projects. And lastly, our second session of summer school is coming up. I think people can still sign up for that, Marsha, or is that closed at this? Okay, that's closed. All right. But with it, that's it. That's all I got.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none now, I would entertain a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851F. And this is for the approval of closed session meeting minutes from June 23rd for personal financial records.
I would move to go to closed.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Guys, second.
Roll call, please.
Doc Kuchko, Lawyer Zarbar?
Yes.
Don Cusky?
Yes.
Andrew Coop?
Yes.
Phil Henkel?
Yes.
Kevin Jensen?
Yes.
Marion Barbara? Oh, she was there. I think she's gone.
She has, she.
All right. Bert Richard?
Yes.
And Nellie Shire?
Yes.
All right.
I don't think we've seen that yet about that luncheon, but I, for some reason I had it in my calendar. Somebody mentioned it. Maybe he mentioned it.